Good evening Chairman Bob.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dibble will be absent. Commissioner Schrader. Commissioners Zarguni.
Present.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner York.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Mandel.
Here.
And Commissioner Salazar Garza.
Here.
Coran established.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of absences for Commissioner Mandel. Do I have a motion?
Michael York, do we approve absences?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Salazar Garza has a second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed same signs. Motion passes. Moving on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or questions?
Commissioner Salazar Garza, a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion passes. On to the consent public hearing items. Andrew.
Thank you sir. Good evening Commissioners Andrew Demus with Development Services to read in tonight's consent agenda, which is Roman numeral five, starting with letter A New Plats, item number two Shoreline Vista Unit Three, a final of 5.78 acres. Item number three North Beach Townhomes, a final of point zero, sorry 0.83 acres. Item number four Flower Bluff Estates Number Two Block Eight Lot Nine R, a final of point 189 acres. Item number five Laguna Vista Shores Block Twelve Lot Seven R, a final replat of point 345 acres. Item number six Island Oaks Unit Three A, a final of 3.55 acres. Staff recommends approval along with the technical review committee and they find that the reported plots meet all the conditions of the UDC and the Texas Local Government Code. Moving on to letter B New Zoning, also under the consent agenda, item number seven Case 0521-03 Nicholas Halick. This is a request at the address of 1697 NS Jocelyn Road and the request is from the RS 10 Single Family 10 District to the ON Neighborhood Office District. Staff recommends approval. Item number eight Case 0521-02 Terry J Cox. The property is located at 15022 Leeward Drive. The request is from the RMATIO, which is the Island Overlay Multi-Family District to the RMAT/IO/PUD, which stands for Multi-Family AT District with the Island Overlay and a planned unit development. Staff also recommends approval. That concludes tonight's consent agenda. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them. Mr. Chair, that concludes the consent agenda. If there are any questions on any items listed on the consent agenda, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Thank you Andrew. I've been talking the entire time on the hold, asking those same questions. I mean on mute. So at this time, are there any comments for items two through eight from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, this is Sheldon Schrader. I apologize. I got on a little late at some technical difficulties. I do have one question on the plat. Pardon me just a moment. Flower Bluff plat, first item on there, I think it's Shoreline Vista. The, there's a question on drainage. The the road that's part of that running east-west, shown to be over the current drainage swell that's there. Just for informational purposes, is that, it's presuming if they develop this, they have to deal with whatever runoff is currently handled through that drainage that comes from other properties. Is that, is that correct? They're going to essentially eliminate that swell.
That is correct Commissioner. As part of any plat, storm water quality management plan would, it was submitted and as we get to the public improvements phase, that will be checked a second time to verify that all drainage is being handled accurately and nothing is flooding onto anyone else's property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding items two through eight? Seeing none Andrew, I will open the public hearings for items two through eight.
Thank you Mr. Chair. We received no public comment on the two rezoning cases. However, we did receive one mailed in notice for the plat, which is item number five Laguna Vista Shores Block Twelve Lot Seven R. It is an opposition letter to the notice, but no notes were added on why they are opposing the replat.
Thank you. Are there any comments or anybody on the line that would like to speak? Seeing none Andrew, any other comments?
No sir, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for items two through eight or further comments from Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one other question. The zoning case for the pud on the island and the side yard or the side yard setback of five feet on that is they show the the 18-foot depth parking space to take that full side yard setback, which the adjacent property has a fence on the property line there. In these types of developments where they're going to be largely rental in nature, is that problematic with vehicles parked against that fence that was obviously placed by the neighboring tenant as far as vehicles hitting that fence?
The project will be screened, but there is not a limitation concerning parking going into a setback. Of course, as they get to the plating phase, it very similar to the last question, they'll have to make sure that stormwater doesn't go onto their property, so it'll have to be sloped correctly, but there is, there is no such unfortunately, there's not a line in the UDC outside of buffer yards that prohibits parking or any type of impervious surface from going into a setback.
Okay, and the, as far as.
Sheldon, if you don't mind, I want to follow up on your question.
Yes.
You said there's no requirement on parking in a setback, but is there any requirement in the UDC that requires parking to be set back from a property line? I know there's a landscape requirement, but I think that's only when it's up against the street. Is there, is there anything that requires them to be set back from the edge of the property?
Only if it's a buffer yard. That is the, the only time that that requirement is triggered.
Okay.
And you are correct. On your second part, you are correct. The only screening is a, is a requirement from a right of way.
Okay, so Mr. Demus, follow up. You said when it is a buffer yard required, and I believe that this is here, correct? Is it on this side is a, that is a in addition to a setback, it's a, it's also a buffer yard?
In this case, the surrounding properties are also zoned RMAT, so there is not a difference in zoning districts to trigger the buffer yard requirement.
I got, okay, I'm sorry. That's, that's with the okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
If not, do I have a motion or further comment on items two through eight or a motion for any one?
Mr. Commissioner Miller, I move that we approve items two through eight as presented. Michael York, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed same sign. Motion passes. On to the public hearing item C.
Good evening Commissioners, as the PowerPoint is loading, I just want to do a little mic check. Can you hear me just fine?
We can.
Wonderful. Good evening Commissioners Karen Costanza with the Planning Department. Also with me this evening is Dan McGinn, the Director of Planning. And the item before you this evening is the Padre Mustang Island Area Development Plan. This is a public hearing item and we'd also be seeking recommending action from this body. Next slide please.
Hey, before we get too far into this presentation, I, I want to ask, there's been some comments and I guess potentially some changes, it seems like that have come up recently. I know I saw a lot of stuff, a lot of activity going on. I'm just curious, is the, the the link that we have, the agenda packet, do we have the most current plan to look at?
The most current plan is dated May 12th. That should be the one that's in your packet. Please correct me if that is inaccurate.
Uh, this.
It says May 26th.
Yeah, this says May 26th.
Sorry.
So maybe it's even newer.
That's, I think that's the memo that is the 26th and I think the draft is the, the 12th.
Thank you for that.
Just above that, it says supporting documents, May 12th draft, so. Okay, well that answers my question, I think. Thank you.
Okay, you, you did give me a start there. So starting off, and, and yeah, so May 12th would be the most current draft that we have of the area development plan. And again, it is, it is a draft, but, and I do, I do have some comments when it comes to the public hearing. So continuing with the presentation, if that is okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, so the area development plans are documents that are part of our comprehensive plan. There are area developments in place for all of our nine districts throughout the city. The island, Padre Mustang Island is one of those districts and it's actually kind of unique because its most recent iteration was adopted back in early 2017 due to an initiative by the Island Strategic Action Committee, the ISAC. So it is a little bit more current than some of the ones that we've been updating here that are decades old. But also as we've been going through this process of updating the area development plans, there was a desire to bring some of that updating also to the Island Area Development Plan. Some of those graphics and context, content and modernizing the document. Next slide please. So the island, it is barrier island, consists of both South Padre Island, sorry, North Padre Island on the south and then Mustang Island towards north. It is bounded again by the Gulf of Mexico on one side and then Corpus Christi Bay and Laguna Madre on the other. Next slide please. And the intention with these planning initiatives is to really have something actionable and implementable at the end and we'll be talking about these various elements in this presentation. But really to understand that as we set out to create these documents, there was a desire to make sure that there was essentially a blueprint, a path forward for the community to be able to both be inspired and then empowered to bring these visions into fruition. Next slide please. Just a broad timeline, we did start our community engagement over a year ago. Our first meeting with the ISAC was in person in the very beginning of March and then we quickly had to switch over to all digital and online content. We have met with the ISAC six times throughout this process and with the community, three, having two, sorry, three community workshops and meetings across the, the community engagement process. And also a slide with a bit more detail on that in just a moment. Next slide please. So the introduction section of the plan first starts out with demographics, helping to identify some of the key trends and how the island differs from the rest of the city. Again, you can see the sort of tourism impact when you look at the level of vacancy in those in the occupied housing use. Those aren't exactly vacant, but they are more geared towards tourists and visitors. And so they are quantified as vacant, also the significant difference in the median, median home value on the island. So really helping to provide that baseline of information. And there is a background document also available on the project website with a lot more rich and valuable information about the island, both from our data that we've been able to gather from outside sources as well as from our community survey information. You'll see more of that in a moment. Next slide please. So this is the more detailed slide. Our community engagement is very important to these processes. At the end, we are hoping to have a document that there's a sense of ownership from the community, that it's something that they want to see implemented and want to help work alongside 100 subscribers to our constant contact email list for this island project. And so every time we have one of these public engagements, even today's public hearing, that is blasted out to that group so that they are aware that that's happening and how that they can participate and also share the information with their neighbors, families and friends. We also have been using social media pretty heavily. Our last Facebook post promoting the survey back in the spring was reached about 17,000 people. So really trying to make sure that we were using technology along the way as best we could to get as many people involved as possible. Next slide please. So this is the survey summary from the spring of 2020, so over a year ago to help build that foundation of what the needs are, what are the interests, what are the values that the island community wants us to focus on in the planning effort. This really helps shape and frame the document, the vision, as well as the policy initiatives and action items. Next slide please. And the next section of the document is the future land use map. Just like in the area development plan, there is a future land use map in place. I will go ahead and again emphasize for those who are less familiar and are listening in, I know the Planning Commission is very familiar with the future land use map, but it is not a zoning map, so the underlying underlying zoning districts don't change with the future land use map, but it does help build that vision of future development and direction for the community. One thing I did want to point out, the permanent open space is identified here at about 30% of the acreage on the Padre, within the Padre Mustang Island Future Land Use Map. That is something that we've heard a lot about and from the community regarding wanting to see that asset and you'll see a little bit more of that in the, in the vision slides. Next slide please. So vision themes, there are three vision themes for the island. The first one is to continue to foster safe, family-friendly neighborhoods that provide needed amenities and services for local residents. You can see some of the input here that helped create this vision theme, helped shape it. A family-friendly community where people can enjoy living and feel safe. Next slide please. For each of these vision themes, there's a conceptual artist rendering. For many, it's a lot easier to see a vision in, in an image. And so here you can really see that captured the neighborhood family quality. This is actually down in Park and in the distance you can see the JFK Cosway Bridge. But in, in the foreground, there's the playground where families and children interacting, of course, the community garden. So really highlighting that, that family neighborhood quality that we heard a lot about from the community. Next slide please. The second vision theme is encourage tourism and the development of local commercial businesses to build a strong economic environment and sufficiently support the year-round residential community. And again, we heard a lot about this from, from the community, wanting to see our community is a great place to live and a great place to visit. Next slide please. And this is the conceptual rendering here of Park Road 22 Bridge in the background and an eatery, a sidewalk eatery potentially along a waterfront. Again, that's the, the kind of atmosphere, this sort of commercial activity that we've heard a good deal about from the community, wanting to see these types of amenities that don't just serve our visitors, but our year-round residents as well. Next slide please. And the third vision theme, capitalize on existing environmental features as assets for the community and ensure the preservation of these areas as the island continues to develop. And again, community input, we've heard this throughout, a balance between a sustainable environment, inviting tourism spot and community engagement. Next slide please. And here's that rendering. We're looking north from Packard Channel towards Mustang Island. Lots of activity on the beach, lots of wetlands, open space and of course the lively beach development right there in the, in the middle. And, and the beautiful water features that encompasses the island. Next slide please. The policy initiatives and action items are really the heart, the meat, the meat, the substance of, of the document. There's a lot there. Each of these policy initiatives, and there are six of them, has one, two, multiple pages of action items to really help implement and bring forward these, the vision that the community has set out for the future of the island. And so of course, I invite everybody to really explore those action items. Policy initiatives cover, you know, a variety of topics from transportation and alternative transportation, making sure that the natural resources and assets are protected while also supporting and encouraging compatible and context sensitive development and also expanding tourism on the island while enhancing parks and recreation facilities and activities. Next slide please. Public investments and, and these are separated out into three different timeframes, short-term, midterm and long-term. The short-term projects generally fall in that one to five-year timeframe. Many of them are under construction or they're funded in, in design process. And so it's really helpful to have this laid out, not just for our internal city departments, but also with our partner agencies to help coordinate. And it's also great information for our residents and potential investors in the area to kind of see what else is going on in the island. Next slide please. The midterm projects fall in that six to 10-year, the next, the next five-year batch. And I should mention that these can be flexible. For example, if funding or a grant opportunity became available that was appropriate for one of these projects in the midterm, that might, you know, be moved forward a little earlier, but it's wonderful to have it in a plan because that does make it much more competitive for those grant processes if it's in a city adopted plan. And next slide please. And long-term projects to round it out. These would be in the 10-plus year timeframe. Again, that, that timeframe is flexible. Next slide please. And finally, the online survey summary. We had nearly 200 respondents to the survey, although as the questions progressed, people did drop off. So of those that responded to this question regarding supportive plan adoption, 78% of those respondents were supportive or very supportive of plan adoption. Also included here is the top five ranked short-term projects. You can see number one, the island mobility plan for pedestrian, bicycle, golf cart and other alternative transportation. It's a very highly ranked item. It's very important to the residents on the island and businesses that folks be able to navigate the island without having to use their vehicles and be able to, to walk, bike or get around with alternative transportation. Numbers two and three are related to the Packard Channel. Uh, numbers two and three are related to the Packree Channel, another important asset on the island, both on needing repairs from Hurricane Harvey and then um the ongoing maintenance and operation related to dredging and and beach nourishment activities. Next slide, please. So with that, um, both staff and the island Strategic Action Committee recommend plan adoption. And again, this is both a public hearing and uh we are seeking a recommending action from this body so that we can continue to the uh public hearing at city council as the next step uh of this process. Uh, and I I will note for the chair, when the public hearing is uh opened, we do have uh seven. Uh, that's my last count, uh uh written comments submitted today that I will need to read into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, before I open the public hearing, do I have any comments for staff?
Just uh, this is Michael York, just a question on the um, the future, I I guess it was recommended improvements. But I I didn't see it, but I wonder if was the the future second connection to the island discussed, or is that is that included on this plan anywhere? And I'm talking of the the future bridge or causeway, whatever it will be um that I think connects sort of to the south side of of town?
Yes, in a way. Um, so that is identified as, so there's a couple. There's a, first of all, there's a JFK uh causeway evaluation as uh in the midterm is S twenty-nine. Um, I do want to point that out. And then um, I I'll need to to find the 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 actual project here in just a second. I I know it's on here.
Yeah, Karen, I found it here. The uh, on page twenty-seven, one point two, it does talk about talk about that that plan and and concept to evaluate kind of the second crossing and or evaluation of JFK. You know, the expansion or just, you know, just looking at that bridge in general because of its age.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yes, this, the uh, in regards to the future land use map, the there's significant areas here identified as planned development. Um, Karen, can you describe the the intent behind that as far? So for example, the area that's at the end of Sea Pines Drive on the south end of the the development area, um, that's, you know, I guess I presume is planned, it's canal lots and things. What is the rationale for identifying that as planned development versus low-density residential like the adjacent areas?
All right, it, well, the the definition of that planned development category, and I do want to make sure it it doesn't necessarily align with a HUD, which you see a lot in the zoning, right? Again, it's not a zoning map. It's it, they're different. But the planned development category um really is intended to identify areas that are expected to require a rezoning tied to a master plan process or an area development process. And in this case, the um developer uh in that in that area west and and sort of south of Sea Pines did request that this be designated as planned development in the future land use map.
And is that partly because services aren't available yet to those that area?
Not not necessarily. They they may be looking at other um options moving forward. But we do, we don't know exactly what their plans are for this area.
Is the assumption that it's going to be developed in the near future? Is that why you're listing it like that?
Right, so in the not-too-distant future, right? And and so uh the there's there's nothing specifically submitted there that that we know of and are and feel confident um in terms of putting a another designation on, but that it is in that process of having a master plan.
Okay, so so the similar thing then applies to the north end of the large development towards uh in the about mid mid-distance to Fort Aransas, that area past the green uh the the non-developed area. Um, that is is similarly, it's just, it it, nothing in there has been uh planned. So therefore, uh, it's it's not stipulated any particular type of land use.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a kind of a follow-up to that. With these planned development areas, since I apparently we expect development in the, whatever you said, not-so-distant future or something, then does does this um plan have or or is the city looking to do any, you know, studies for master planning of of street infrastructure, utilities and so forth to accommodate, you know, this all this acreage that may be developed in the near future?
Um, yeah, this this area, whatever's going to be in our city limits, will be uh updated through the uh the Impact Fee Study that we're doing includes those master plan updates for the various uh the wastewater water. Uh, and actually, this area, the south end um does conti- is part of our um Whitecap wastewater master plan area, but there there will likely be some changes, I think, to that as we go through the uh the study with the consultant that's on board now.
Okay.
And and I think to answer your question, it it is, all this is gearing up for where our future uh would be. So it's not like anything's permanent or it's going to be there now, uh but it is for helping for future growth and and expectation. So, yeah, I don't think there's a plan to put better road improvements or anything like that, but just to update the master plans for that improvement.
Well, that's that's what I was getting at because I I don't remember what was on the, you know, early and mid-range uh efforts, but it seems like it it might be a good idea to move those master planning studies up if they're not already there because it looks like these developments may actually be coming sooner instead of, you know, thirty years from now.
Yes, you'll see them in the short term, actually, uh, list.
Okay, great.
Right there, you seven. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the comments.
Okay, and as I mentioned, I have seven to read into the record. Please bear with me. The first uh public comment received is from Edwin Edwards, one four nine five seven, Canadian Mist Drive. I reference slide thirteen, future land use map of the twenty twenty-one point five point twelve draft Padre Island Area Development Plan. This map shows the area occupied by the soon-to-be-demolished Waves Water Park as commercial on the site of the main park and newly-built canal and planned development for the remaining space down to Whitecap Boulevard and up around the end of Aquarius Street, again adjacent to the main Waves building currently being demolished. Is it the expectation of this commission that this development will be largely residential in nature? And if so, why is it not marked using one of the three residential density densities shown in the key? If not residential, what is the expectation of commission as to the nature of this development? If planned, where are the plans to be inspected? Additionally, referencing slide ten of the same plan, it shows survey result of eighty percent in the category of nature, open space, and beach areas for the question, what is your favorite thing about Padre Mustang Island? And not enough parks as the second greatest land use issue, twenty-three percent. Has the commission given consideration to redesignating the existing wildlife ponds and nature walk at Waves shown as part of the planned development as permanent open space? This still leaves a large tract of land for development and would be an asset for such development. What studies have been done regarding the additional flood risk caused by the removal of the wetland area? During hurricanes, these areas absorb a large amount of water that would otherwise enter residential areas. Is this not increasingly important as the newly-completed canal on Park Road Twenty Two makes this area more vulnerable to storm surge in the Gulf? The wetlands covered by the planned development are currently used by a variety of migratory and non-migratory species of bird and were once lauded by the Audubon Society for their importance. What studies have been done to assess the impact of their removal? Has proper consideration been given to placing this area under the stewardship of Ducks Unlimited? With the financial advantages this offers and maintaining the island as an important destination for duck hunters, with the financial advantages this offers?
Karen, I just, before you move to the next one, I forgot. Um, Kat, if you don't mind, I I know we're supposed to kind of stick to the the three-minute, three-minute mark timer, and I forgot to mention this before you started. Karen, I I think most of you will be able to be ready for the record before the three minutes, but maybe just something to monitor, Kat, please.
Yeah, this is the only other one that has multiple pages, and I I do believe they'll all fit within that timeframe. Thank you, Dan. I had forgotten that. Okay. Moving on with the next uh public comment input form that we received. This is from Holly Edwards, one four nine five seven, Canadian Mist Drive. I am a resident of Padre Island. I have been watching the planning commission reports and answering the surveys. Up through December, it has shown future land use for the next ten years as green space. I have stopped worrying about the city's plans. I double-checked when waves started coming down and saw that had changed. What plans are in place to protect the wildlife that thrives back there? To mitigate damage to migratory birds, the United States has lost seven hundred million birds since nineteen seventy. Corpus Christi is supposed to be the birdiest city. Do we want to contribute to the destruction of more birds? Once this was recognized as an Audubon habitat site for piping clovers, now it is marked for future development. What studies has the city done for environment and ecological impact? We bought our house in October of twenty nineteen. The selling feature of our house was the fact that it was on land that would not be built on. We were told that it was protected land due to nesting piping clovers. We spent an extra sixty thousand dollars for our house in Fairway Estates for the fact that there were beautiful views and abundant wildlife. I have been watching the planning commission reports and answering the surveys. Up through December, it has shown future use for the next ten years as green space. I had stopped worrying about the city plants. I double-checked when waves started coming down, saw that had changed. I do not want my property values to diminish. I do not want to look out my window and see anything but the green space I paid for and was promised. You asked people what they liked about this island, and eighty percent said the open spaces. Seems you do not really care. We aren't even told the plan for the future development. What is being developed? And then continues, there are two points in the publication provided by the commission under policy initiatives and implementation. Protect and monitor natural resources and assets critical to the health of the barrier island and regional ecosystem. Support and encourage compatible and context-sensitive development that provides a mix of land use, land uses and respects the environment. I have a few questions. In the area that is behind Fairway Estates, it was marked as green space up until March's meeting. It then changed to the future development. With the abundance of wildlife back there, how is this respecting the environment and protecting natural resources? And again, uh pointing to the eighty percent uh response that liked the open spaces, I was taking away open space, answering the need for the islanders who pay heavy taxes. And then up until March, see city map, it had shown the area in question as green space for the next five to ten years. Not knowing the plan had changed, I did not feel the need to watch the maps. Why the change? And then what environmental and ecological impact studies have been done for the area where the ponds and marshes are that have now been marked as future development? Are you aware that it was once designated an endangered habitat by the Audubon Society? Okay. Next public comment is from Charlene Forrest at one four nine six one, Canadian Mist Drive. I currently reside on the backside of the old Padre Isles Country Club, also known as the Back Nine Holes of Schlitterbahn. I moved out here in nineteen ninety-four for the open space and nature's beauty. The wildlife and birds are wonderful and draw birders from all around the state. I'm in receipt of the newly-proposed plan for development of this property immediately behind my house. I am strictly against the plan which allows for commercial development. The wetlands should not be destroyed just so the developer can fill his pockets with money. The property should be, continue to be used to prevent flooding of the island estates behind it. The new plan will lower my property value, raise my taxes, and destroy what little we have for wildlife to thrive. Please do not vote for this new plan, but re-resurrect the October and December published plant resurrect the October and December published plan, which has been removed. Thank you. Next one is from Jody Steen, one four nine six five, Canadian Mist Drive. I am a resident and business owner in Padre Island. I own multiple properties on Padre Island, two of which are on Canadian Mist Drive, which backs up to the old golf course. I purchased those properties at a premium because of the view and the fact that they were marked as green space, and I actually have one as my home. The houses and lots in Fairway Estates, Crown Royal Highland Mist, Highland Mist Drive and Canadian Mist Drive were marketed and sold at a premium with a promise of having a great view and open space. Up until the March Planning Commission meeting, this was shown under the future plan as green space and as it has been since I bought the land. It was then changed to future development for the March meeting. Development of the land behind my property will devalue my property considerably. I strongly oppose any development of the previously marked green space behind the development known as Fairway Estates. Next comment is from Tina Walker, address one five five three seven Cuddy Sark Street. Please reconsider joining this beautiful nature preserve near Canadian Mist on Padre Island where migrating birds come at year after year. Thanks. And then from Melody Nichols at one three nine seven three Lanyard Drive. Padre Island doesn't need beautiful, useful wetlands in the path of many migratory birds and home to many other birds and wildlife destroyed to build more short-term rental condos. We have plenty of short-term rental condos. Most of the residents here move to the island for its natural beauty and not just to make money attracting partying tourists who roll through and trash the place all summer. We have enough of that, too. We don't need more. Leave this space wild. And then the final one uh just came in. Uh, please bear with me. It's my first time reading it. This is from uh Ray and Debbie Morris at one five nine zero nine, Punta Bonera Drive. Question for tonight's meeting. Who was sent out letters for projects in their area, and when do those get sent out, and when are responses due? Where can those comments be seen? How was the planned development map arrived at? When did developers submit their plans? In other words, how did the Padre Island Area Development Plan and the group hired to do the plan know that the Schlitterbahn Waves Resort was going to be torn down and another development put in its place? This was only announced recently, and when the city has been asked what is going on with that land, they have stated that no one has submitted plans and they do not know. An RV park behind the dunes where the horses on the beach used to be, question mark, with no infrastructure? And when a hurricane hits, those RVs will be everywhere. Who got sent info for this for commenting? Rezoning, doesn't this require the community to be informed? STR, short-term rentals. Why are they being allowed in neighborhoods that are not zoned for them? What is being done to eliminate versus giving citations? What is the plan for our infrastructure, roads and Park Road Twenty Two increased traffic, additional roads, widening Park Road Twenty Two? This should come before more development. How many overall total new housing is the planned development bringing to the island? How many homes, how many condos, et cetera? That's critical to determine how many more people, cars, boats, trailers, golf carts will be moving around the island. What about our sewer, storm, and water infrastructure? What happened to all our green space? Why doesn't Padre Island have a police substation, a community center, a community pool, a senior center? Flower Bluff has all of these and just got approved for one point five million renovation to the police substation. Why is the city wanting to build a massive storage building for beach equipment within our community? Why not build us a pool and community center? Why take away the golf course? Visitors and islanders really have few entertainment options like a golf course. What is planned for our beaches? What is planned for our beaches and dunes with all the additional people the new planned development will bring? Our stretch of beach looks nothing like Port A. Why? Mr. Chair, that concludes the submitted public comments.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? From the city, anybody on the line or anything like that? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing. I do have a question regarding all the comments. Are we, or staff rather, going to address them with a response, or how does that typically work?
I'm kind of waiting for Legal to chime in, but usually we we are not permitted, at least in these public forums, to respond back and forth between staff and and public comment commentators. So this is a different format.
I was more just curious. I know typically when we have comments, we either address them, make a comment back to them in a public setting, not just when they have to email comments. So I was just more curious than anything how that gets addressed now with the before we go back into council chambers to have these meetings.
And we we can certainly, if there was anything that the the planning, I know there was, you know, obviously a lot of questions kind of wrapped in a lot of those those comments, but if there was anything the planning commission you know, had any thoughts on or, you know, had, you know, wanted us to respond to a specific question or anything like that, we could certainly give it, you know, give it a shot.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'll
I'm just curious. About that as well, and and I I understand, you know, a lot of those concerns seemed about wetlands and and environmental impact and so forth. And I understand that showing it as planned development doesn't mean they're going to develop wetlands. That that gets decided elsewhere. But there has been a lot of concern from the citizens and and I noticed that even Councilman Greg Smith was addressing some of that. So I I'm just curious is will you be having to address any of that and and make changes to this because of that? Or, you know, is it just sort of he answered questions and and the plan stays the same?
Well, I I think a lot of the comments we did get back were a result of the you know, we had looked at the golf course and the golf course in open space was was green and that has been like that for obviously for a number of years. And that's common with our open space or our golf course throughout the community. And obviously, that that area, that land is is privately held. And so half of that property is has been zoned commercially already. And then there's the other half that it's already is zoned for single family uses. And so in in talking with that that landowner, the request was to look at the the planned development use because they know, you know, it's likely that it it will be developed with some things. They have not submitted plans to us, so we don't know exactly what what they're looking at. But you're correct, there is a process where a developer does have to go through, you know, you know, the Corps of Engineers or federal process. Whenever they want to modify, create canals, look at expanding wetlands or moving wetlands around. There is a process that they do have to go through that's outside of of the city process. So that is certainly something they would have to do when they would, you know, if they would look at plans to redevelop that that land. But again, it is private land, it's not owned by the city and and they did obviously have, they're out there demoing part of the the golf court, not the water park and the hotel property. And we do know that they would like to do something with that land. And but at this point, we have not seen plans. But there is a process that they have to go through in order to mitigate wetlands or move wetlands that is kind of outside of what the city would.
And that is great. And what the way I see the plan is like Plan CC. There were several people that were worried about it, against it, worried that it was changing zoning or or replating land or modifying what it was used for, and it really is just a plan. So a lot of those questions did come up as not fully maybe understanding that this is not changing any of that. It's just directing that in the future, it's privately held and it could change, but this is what it could be in the future. But it's not, nothing in concrete, it's not changing it until they submit for a permit or rezoning or replating or whatever it may be, so.
Right. Well, I appreciate y'all's explanation and 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 thank you for the presentation. I think you did a a great job.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Schrader. I want to reiterate Commissioner York's comment there. I do think this was a lot of work put into this and and very well done. I have a couple of, I guess, comments and a question related to the public comment. The first one is these plans that I think two or three of the resident comments referred to prior plan documents. Are those still available on the website? Mrs. Sands, I believe you mentioned that kind of the historical documents through this process were available on the city's website. Are these types of in progress plans also shown there?
Correct, cctexas.com/island. I appreciate the prompt. Everything is on there almost as an archive, if you will. And and yes, the as noted, it had changed once we learned that it was no longer waves and the intention was not to keep it as a golf course. That seemed to be appropriate professionally.
So then I have two comments suggestions in along those lines is one is I would, I suggest maybe putting in a definition or or explanation of some of how what the term planned development means in this context. And then two is, would it be possible to add a map that just simply delineates between public land and private land in this study, simply because there is such large areas of green space that I think some of the perception by the public is that that is all protected public land. And it while a lot of this green, this large green space is shown here, and I think those two things potentially would help people if they're gonna, if they look at this enough, understand that that areas like the golf course and things were, while they're currently a golf course, they're currently green. This, we do not have control of making that remain green space.
Thank you. And I do think we have an exhibit on the website back from from March. It was something the ISAC had asked for. It was very specific though to that public open space designation. And so can take a look at that and revisit that. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I remember call that coming up with with the ISAC. And I think in this community, we we have been very fortunate in that especially here on the island where we do have quite a bit of land that has been preserved by the various public agencies with you know, with the county, they have a tremendous amount of acreage that will not be developed. We have a state park on Mustang Island and then we obviously have the the federal national seashore. So this, we do have, you know, quite a bit of land and that's why you see that large gap when you go over Pakri Channel. Basically, all of that land is held either by the state or county from Pakri Channel till you get to about the the water tank or fire station. So there's, you know, that area is is really just all parkland until you get in the north of there is obviously then when you get into private land.
Thank you. And I do agree with Commissioner Schrader that those little definitions or notes might help clarify some of this for the for the public, so. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, do I have a motion for adopting the Padre Mustang Island area development plan as is or with comments?
This is Commissioner Schrader. I'll make a motion that we adopt the plan as presented with clarification of the term planned development and with identification of public and private land.
Do I have a motion? All right, second, I'm sorry.
It's Michael York. I'll second that.
Are you all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good report and thank you for the for the plan. That's great. Moving on to director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Al Raymond with Development Services. I just wanted to remind everyone that our next meeting will be in council chambers, June 9. We go live again, so be, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and remembrance and we'll see you face to face next month. That's all. Thank you.
Sounds wonderful. If there's nothing else to schedule, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.